And welcome to the June meeting of the Ararat Rural City Council. Council is keen to engage with members of the community and now live streams the form of council meetings to make them accessible. The stream will be available to view on the Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page from 6pm and on council's website, www.ararat.vic.gov.au for Wednesday morning's live council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch the live broadcast, simply enter www.facebook.com/aratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. Please be upstanding.
The traditional acknowledgement. We, the traditional, we acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging.
Opening prayer. Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us as the elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council. Guide our deliberations, prosper what is your will for us to your honour and glory and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
Councillor's pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interests of the people of the municipal district of the Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us under the Local Government Act 1999 or any other act to the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you. All councillors at present, are there any other policies to be noted?
No.
Confirmation of the minutes of the meeting of the 21st of May 2019 and the special council meeting held on the 11th of June 2019. Move councillor Brayfley, second councillor Deutsch, do you wish to speak councillor Brayfley?
No.
Councillor Deutsch, anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. Declaration of disclosure of interest, do any councillors have declarations?
Would you have?
To councillor Deutsch and councillor Albrecht, and they've been lodged, thank you. Is there any urgent business to be admitted? No requests to address council, no deputations, no petitions. Thank you Mr CEO, 3.1 the budget and declaration of rates.
Thank you Mr Mayor. I think council have, we've spent the last couple of months developing the budget, I think it's actually a, a pretty solid budget moving forward for council at this point in time. We adopted the draft budget on 7th of May, on 7th of May, special council meeting. It's obviously we've had the, the period of public notice for budget submissions. We received three submissions which we, which we were aware of when we met last, last special council meeting. The first was we would like to grass like council on realistic budget, address the concerns of rate payers about the revenue problems that local government has, I think we're aware of those very clearly, I think it was a timely submission. The second was raise the number of questions for lines and property about the draft budget, dualisation structure and external consulting resources. And the third was a detailed commentary on the historical impacts of rating of farmland referred to ongoing imposter in the area business sector of council rating strategy to global rate payers. Three submissions were included as attachments to this report. I'll be, I've already acknowledged though, the receipt of those submissions, but I'll be making detailed response of those following adoption of the budget this evening, just to communicate clearly with the issues, the issues and terms raised in those, in the rise of the budget. I guess the, the budget complies with rate cap of 2.5%, as it applies this year. It has a very strong focus on renewal of infrastructure assets. We have increasing, I guess, recurrent costs around our arts, cultural heritage assets, which we're aware of and discussed during the budget development process. The next 12 months I get is my challenges to work with, with the community and work with council offices around improving the cost structure around those parts of our business. We have the, we have the added problem of driving our rate revenue from a very small rural base. We have the, the double issue, I guess, of doing a rural city. So we have the cultural and sporting facilities of a rural city with the road network of a small rural shire, with the rate base of a small rural shire. So we have a bit of a double whammy, if you like, around our revenue structure. Use charge is not a significant source of income, nor should they be, given, given the base of our community. We have a fairly heavy reliance on external rates and grants, external grants in addition to our rates income. We've had some additional borrowings of million dollars this year to service the cost of the town hall redevelopment, forming art centre of the gallery, but that will manage quite easily within our, within our capacity to service that debt. And the rate has been struck as, as discussed in the, in the resolution.
Are there any questions for the CEO, for any councillor? I've got one, and it was in relation to the change of farm rates being actually farms and not small rural blocks in an area. So how many blocks did we end up becoming just general rates now?
As of, as of this week, there are 41 blocks that have become general rated as opposed to farm rated. There are also 50 rate payers who currently haven't responded to the request of that information, and we're still pursuing those through telephone calls and correspondence. And it's predicted that the majority of those will also become general rated properties as well. So we somewhere between 41 and 91 as, as the mix rolls out, but I think that the general consensus about rating stuff is that most of those 50 additional properties will also be moving from farm rate to general rate, against the lack of excitement and desire to information, I guess.
Any other question, casual or good?
Can I just ask the question of the CEO, Mr Mayor please? The difference that that is going to make to their rates, have we got any indication of how far they've moved?
Yeah, look, I, I should have actually had the information, my apologies, I can provide that to you tomorrow. But look, generally the, the blocks involved in that aren't major holdings, so most major holdings are actually existing farm enterprises, they're likely to be quite small holdings with, with quite low CIFs. So the impact, I guess, on the, on the total rates will be a difference in the differential, so they'll, they'll go up almost double in that space, but the, the dollar impact of that will be probably minimal for each rate payer in that space.
Are there any other questions for the CEO? If not, someone should move, councillor Brayfley, councillor Albrecht, second, wish to speak councillor Brayfley?
Yes, I, I, I'm very impressed with the work that's gone into formulating the budget this year. We are talking about record expenditure on infrastructure, we're talking record expenditure on road renewal, we're building some bridge structures which we've had difficulties with over the years, and it's a credit to the people that have been managing the process to find the savings, to find the, the efficiencies which allow a budget of this sort to be created. And I'm very happy with it, and I'm very happy to move the adoption of it.
Any other councillor wish to speak?
Just if I could, as a second, I was very impressed by even the submissions that we got, I thought that they were realistic and they were good, and I'm very pleased to see that we're going to reply to those people, because I think that's great. And I think it'd be really nice if the councillors could have a copy of those replies as well, because as that, as that talk gets out there, we're all going to ask the questions, so if we've got that information, it'd be good, but it's not something that we've done lightly, and I agree with councillor Brayfley about the, the fact of the work that we're doing, and we're certainly not pulling back on the work, we're doing real work, and we've got a plan, and that makes the difference. I think over the years, we've maybe been a little bit lightheaded about what we're going to do, but we seem to be going forward, and we've got a plan that we can all live with and we can all work with, so congratulations to everyone.
Any other councillor to speak, councillor Armstrong?
Thank you. Look, I'm really pleased with how this budget is shaped up, and I think the opportunity that we've had as councillors to review the proposals that have been made and balance that with the resources we have available has been, it's, it's been a really thorough process, and we've been given ample opportunity to make consideration. The whole issue of a rating strategy is something that all councils are grappling with across rural and regional Victoria, and we know through our own experience that differential rating is not the best solution, but it's what we had to work with. We do know that rural rate burdens are inequitable for all land categories, and that's something we're really conscious of in this council. I think that the ongoing burden of cost shifting from state government and the inequitable nature of our taxation system is something that we really need to keep this pressure on our state government to review. With their rating strategy, it's not enough to just look at a, at a capping on rates, it's not enough just to look at the tools of differential rating. So I do hope that our neighbouring councils, all regional and rural councils, are keen to take up this opportunity that we have this year to work together as a small council group to maintain pressure. There simply is no way that the current system, which is archaic, it goes back centuries to, to tax just that one asset category of land in order to provide general services across the local government level. It's unsustainable, it's absolutely unfair, so we do need to maintain that pressure. So with what we've got to work with, I think we've done our very best, and I'm very pleased that this strategy that we're looking at is, it honours the resolution we made as a council last year to not keep trying to fiddling with what we have, with the resources we have and the levers we have. So I do, I support the motion, thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? I might suggest that, I'm not sure whether standing up, you go out the picture or not, but.
Well.
Well, that's technology.
Respectful.
Yeah, but the camera is an issue. So no one else wishes to speak, then, then I'll speak. I think there's a couple of clear things that have been said by councillors today, and councillor Albrecht is one of them. We plan to make decisions, it's, it's a proper plan moving forward. It's not putting money away, hidden away, we don't, we say we're going to do something and oh, we don't get around to doing it, it just stays there in the budget and disappears and stays there. What we plan to do, we have the capacity to deliver it. There's clear indication in all the documents in the areas, we've made savings, and it was put to me at Elmhurst on Saturday, you know, can this assist in, in the rate burden? At the present moment, it isn't, but it's improving the services to everyone. Any reduction would have been only minor to individuals, but for the community to have the amount of roads that are being done, the amount of facilities like at Elmhurst and Willora, fully funded by council, they're really important. And I also agree, I, I'm not a great supporter of the, the rating review, because rating is just, simply it's just not fair and it's just not, not the system we need, we need something else, it's not based on the alleged value of lands. But that's, at the present moment, we've got what we've got, we've shown some consistency, and that's what the community wants to see, that we're not jumping backwards and forwards. And I think at the end of this budget, when we do the next year's budget, we'll be able to look and say, we've done that bridge, we've done that road, we've done exactly what we promised to do. And for that reason, I, I truly support this budget. So if no one else wishes to speak, councillor Brayfley?
No, I think he.
Then I'll put the motion, all those in favour, and it's passed. Draft council plans, CEO.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Our draft council plan incorporating strategic resources plan was, was developed with the same special meeting that we held to, to adopt the draft budget, goes hand in hand with the budget, the budget's had a resource, this council plan. I think council and officers have worked very hard to develop a, a comprehensive but clear plan moving forward for the next 12 months. I'm very pleased with the fact that we've worked to develop some other documentation to support that the community understand we're trying to achieve in very succinct ways. I think that the snapshot document that we put out has been well received in the community, and I think that, that the annual plan that will be developed, delivering to all staff next Monday for the first day of the new year, will be a beautiful gift for them, they'll at least outline their, their year's work moving forward, because our whole work is focused on delivering this plan for council, that's what we're here to do. So without further ado, Mr Mayor.
Any question for the CEO?
Question, is that Elmhurst House still open?
It is, councillor Brayfley, yes.
I'm going to have it displayed there.
Right out. So anyone wish to move the motion? Councillor Albrecht, second, councillor Armstrong, wish to speak?
Just want to read a section that I like. In the conclusion, there remain a number of strategic challenges ahead, including the renewal of council access, but the continuation of an appropriate range and level of services, the maintenance and sound position under the rate capping, it's all mentioned in there. What I would like to see is, I would like a lot more people to get involved in some of the decisions that we're actually making, because what we're actually doing here is this, a lot of this council plan that we've pulled over for so long is really one of those things that when you're applying, if you're an individual or if you're a, a group and you're applying for a grant, you need to try and tie everything together, and not a lot of people understand that that's part of the process that needs to be done. And this particular document is always very important. It's a very difficult document to get your head around when you're a newbie, but after you've read it a few times, you actually can understand the focus that we've got, so I think it's a good document.
Thank you. Well, I'll speak in favour of the recommendation. Some years ago, they brought out plain English in law, this is plain English in council plans. It is simple, precise, and it's focused not on what goes on within the organisation, but what the organisation can supply to the community, it's focused out, and I just love it. So, a move or wish to close the debate? No?
Happy with that.
Right. All those in favour? Against, pass. Let general local law, I mean.
Please, Mr Mayor.
People could, I have a, I have an interest in it, which I have launched, yeah.
Yes, as indicated in the, in the meeting. So councillors, any questions for the CEO? We've been through this a bit, we've mucked up at the special meeting of council by not having a call in councillor Albrecht, because by the time it goes to without a call, so it's back. So does anyone wish to move the recommendation? Councillor Brayfley, second, councillor Armstrong, anyone wish to speak to it?
No.
I'll put the motion in, all those in favour? Against, pass. Ask the councillors to return, please. I think they've gone away for a cup of tea, we thought we were going to have a heavy debate on that one. Thank you councillors, the recommendation is passed.
Thank you.
We're on to 3.4, the final report, Ararat Rural City Council Work Plan Action Plan. CEO?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Following the commission of inquiry, there was an action plan put in place to, to enact the, the recommendation of that commission. We've actually, in a position now to have concluded all the actions that inquiry, including the completion of the service reviews. From an organisational perspective, the important thing is that we, we take the, the changes we can make the organisation based on recommendations such as the service reviews, and use that to improve our, our commitment to the service leadership community. I'll, I'll leave it there, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for the CEO? Anyone wish to move the motion? Councillor Armstrong, second councillor Brayfley, wish to speak, councillor Armstrong?
I do. Are you recommending I not stand, or?
Do what you feel.
I'm comfortable to remain seated if, if that's preferred. Look, in regard to the, this council action work plan, I actually think that the minister's comments in the letter sent to council advising that, that the minister had chosen to conclude Nistor's appointment as monitor, there's a phrase in that letter that I'd, I'd like to bring to the meeting's attention, which was, "I'm confident the council will continue to provide good governance and exhibit the high personal standards of conduct that are warranted as representatives elected to make decisions in the best interests of their local community." And I think the goals of that work action plan was absolutely to arrive at this conclusion. I am hugely relieved that we have arrived at this point, and I think the evidence in our, as we're presenting tonight, our budget, our council plan and our strategic resource plan are actual hard evidence of the solid work that this council and organisation has achieved in, in recent months.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, oh councillor Armstrong.
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to say that I was not a councillor when this work action plan was put into place, and having come late to that action plan, I am very impressed with the way that all councils have worked towards this and in implementing the work plan and getting to a point where we now have the confidence of that, and I would hope of all our rate payers. So I would like to congratulate everybody, councilors and staff for getting to this point.
Does anyone else wish to speak? If not, the only comment I wish to make before I put the recommendation off and move it closer, that this has been 18 months of hard work, and particularly by the staff. I mean, we're very visible people, the staff are very, very visible people within their community, and they feel good. They know we've got a lot of work to do, but they feel they belong to an organisation that respects them, and that's us, and that the community is beginning to respect them again. So I'm pleased that we've got this off our back. So, wish to close the debate? Or move it? No? No, all done? All those in favour? Against, pass. Policy group, CEO?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor. This is just a very brief tuning up of two policies, it's our fraud and corruption policy and our procurement policy, based on some feedback from our audit committee, and pretty straightforward changes, there were just some changing, some meaningless changes in the fraud and corruption policy, but also, I guess, internal to internal audit process, so some very small changes there. And we've increased in the procurement policy, one quotation from $5,000 to $10,000, and that still falls the conservative end of that one quote policy within local government. I think it just, it's, it makes life a bit easier in terms of procurement, rather than having to go to three quotes for things around $5,000, you know, we all know we don't buy very much for $5,000 in a corporate setting at this stage anymore, so that increase would be very beneficial, and it's just been removed a lot of old roles that we no longer have in the organisation from, from the policy.
Any questions for the CEO? If not, someone wish to move it? Councillor Albrecht? Councillor Armstrong, wish to speak, councillor Armstrong? Anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, pass. General valuations?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor, the, the general valuations are now conferred by the value generals department. I guess on page 22 is, is the core issue, is that we see the valuation by category there and by percentage change between 2018 and 2019. The greatest change there is in residential property valuation, which is 4.32% increase, commercial property's gone up by 1.43%, industrial, including wind farms, has gone up 1.09%. Rural, including urban farmland, have gone up by 2.72%. Urban farmland, I guess there is some increase from a farm zone plan into the Ararat urban area, has gone up by 2.72% and non-royal local property's gone up by 3.06% on capital proof value. As you can see, there are no massive increases in any of those, those groupings, and I suppose that the one benefit we were promised under the annual rating regime was there'd be a smoothing of those, of those valuation increases, we won't see the crazy jags of 15 or 20% increases in valuations as we've seen in the past, although we may still see them in some isolated areas, so this is, this is general. But there are still some areas where there may be 10% increases, which are, which are then smoothed over by smaller increases in other areas of the grouping. But I think we've actually, overall, looking at the valuation, that's going to impact on rating, I think we've actually fared quite well this year, and there shouldn't be any rate shocks this year experienced by rate payers as we've had in previous times. There are some of our neighbouring municipalities who are suffering some significant rate shock problems against, but I think we'll be largely immune from those. And again, I'll be encouraging people who do have really substantial or onerous increases in rating based on that kind of valuation shock to, to get in touch with us, and we can talk to them about how we can help challenge that variation with the value of general, because I guess it's part of our role to ensure that, that people receive fair treatment on the rating system as well. So I'll certainly be quite active, and it's an unusual move, but I'll be quite active in that space to, to help assist people when they've actually had very clear, you know, because there may have been some local, very high man samples that may impact in a short term that we can help to work around. Does in the rest of the value of general to, to hear those, hear those complaints as well.
Any, sorry, any questions for the CEO? Oh, you've got a question?
Yes, I have, thank you. Mr CEO, what, the, the shift from valuation being every second year to every year, what's the bottom line cost been to, to council?
I, I have to take that one notice, I'll have to give you that figure tomorrow, but it will have had a significant cost imposed to us, yes. Yeah, but again, that's a part of local government being the creature of state government to some degree, to a certain rate.
Exactly that.
Not wanting to be legal about it.
It could have been, wasn't it?
But I'll get, I'll provide to council tomorrow that the exact additional cost of that process, but it will have a cost to us. But I guess the, the only benefit I can identify, trying to see the silver lining there, councillor Armstrong, is the fact that there will be a smoothing in those valuations shocks over the years, so people shouldn't technically be expecting to have crazy changes in the valuation like we've had in the past.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Albrecht, trust you all may be, wasn't it every four years at one stage, and they were massive?
Yeah, I'm trying to rest in tail on people arguing the point about the valuations when they all came into the room and Mr Newman said, "Look at your rate notice", and they looked at their rate notice and he said, "Will you sell me your house for that amount of money?" "No way", and everybody left. And it was just, you know, it was just one of those instances where you think, probably going as far as we possibly can, but not making people happy.
So are there any other questions for the CEO? If not, someone move the recommendation? Councillor Brayfley, councillor Armstrong, do you wish to speak to it? Councillor Armstrong, anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, pass. God, it's the CEO again.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh yes, I said.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is, this one's the community support grants and event funding review. So at current, the existing council support grants programme provides opportunities for funding projects and activities within the community. So we've undertaken our review of the programme this year to look at the programme and how it can work better for the community and all the community groups as well, and also not to be too onerous for people to apply. The guidelines and criteria for the programme was not really capturing councils and the community needs, so we looked at the guidelines and, and the criteria for the assessment as well, and we're looking at a programme that has been proposed for a one-stop shop programme for all funding requests, and that's including incorporating fun, event funding as well. This is to include grants to provide funding to clubs, organisations and community groups for the provision of programmes, projects, activities and events that deliver outcomes to our community. The revamped programme will look to provide assistance in the areas of sport and recreation, health and wellbeing, arts and culture, festivals and events, and the environment and sustainability, so there's a broader areas that we can provide funding for. Changes to the existing programme would mean the allocated budget line items for events will no longer exist in the 2019-2020 budget, with all event funding being allocated to the new process. So there's already budget allocation in there for that, and the new structure of criteria to meet the eligibility requirements will be assessed according to the new proposed project events, giving clear objectives of the activity being undertaken in the areas of outcomes, planning and management, budget and sufficient documentation when they do apply. We have looked at the infrastructure capital for major or minor works on council buildings or within, won't be eligible through this process, because we'll be looking at that from a council capital works programme. And the total annual proposed budget incorporating event funding is $171,000 with two rounds per year, so we can split that in half. All funds will be allocated on a two-for-one basis, so council will provide $2 for each $1 contribution. All funds will be allocated on a two-for-one basis. So council will provide $2 for each $1 contributed by the applicant. And applications will be assessed by an independent board panel consisting of council officers and community members, which are selected by the CEO. So with the rollout of this proposed plan, we're looking to do a big communications plan and a suite of information along with guidelines and procedures to be implemented. So it's very clear for community groups to apply how they apply. So we'll continue to work with them as we move forward with that.
Councillors, you've got a lament in front of you. We've removed certain things and it's added something to the recommendations up.
Can I just ask a question please?
Yes, certainly.
Australian go removed from this list, does that mean that we're putting it back in? At what cost?
No, it's actually part of council's cultural responsibility to run that event, so.
It is, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It hasn't got a fee for it, has it?
No, but that'll come from another part of the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't be not funding Australia Day.
And it won't be coming out of grants. So are there any questions for the officer? No, I'll see if someone can move the recommendation. Councillor Hall? Councillor Armstrong, who wants to speak? Councillor Hall? Anyone wants to speak?
Yes, I just, well, councillor Armstrong did say she did say she wanted to speak, so.
I don't care who goes first.
Happy. Look, this is just a really important part of a contribution that we can make as a council. And there's a number of people who really rely on the heart of the subject of this matter in that they've got something to start with. And a lot of clubs just get over the line. And all of these people are volunteers. And, you know, you tend to forget that. It's a lot of hard yakka to actually put on a bed like the Arrow Cup, like the Valora Cup. Everything that we actually do in this particular space is something that's really important to our community. And it's done by volunteers. So to be able to give them an allocation of money off this office is pretty important. And we should be pretty proud of it too, because it's one of those things that, you can't replace our volunteers, they're so important to us.
Councillor Armstrong?
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight how important it is that we do have money available in our budget, as we're proposing to do, for seed funding, just to make sure that our events and festivals do remain vibrant and fresh and relevant to our community and that we are not stuck in a cycle of habitually supporting events that we have had running for a very, very long time. I think we have room in our community for some fresh new ideas and new approaches. And I think the point made by you, Ms Cronin, about the burden on community volunteers being lessened by having a less onerous application process is really valuable as well. So I welcome this review to the funneling of our events and also our support grants. And I think it's going to give a revitalisation to this area of that community.
Anyone else wish to speak? I'll just add a few points. This does not in any way affect the wind farm grants, which are administered by council. That's completely separate, so that'll be done differently. I think it's very important that the community involved in the selection process, and it's not just kept in-house and then dropped on the council saying, "Well, here's your choices and that's it." There are many people out there who have been volunteer positions and understand the community organisation. We aren't making a decision today. We'll make a decision in July meeting after consultation. But the reality is, some things you must let fail. You can't keep propping up things. And I'm not indicating that I think any of these would fail. I'm just saying, there are lots of other groups that could benefit from seed funding to get off the ground. So if you wish to oppose debate, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. Access coordinator, is that which?
That'll be motion, obviously, man.
Oh, yes.
Lovely talented man, this lady. Yeah, there's a proposal here to, we've received a request to close, from a joint rock down to close a road reserve and make it available for purchase. In order to do that, we need to support that idea. It's actually not currently a physical road. It's marked on the map with the white line there. The adjoining landowner wishes to purchase it, I guess, to add to their stock of land. I've got to say, every road reserve that's being used is a good thing if we can get it off our books. So that's just me being CEO, not assets manager there for a month. But I think it's important that we provide the opportunity for landowners to purchase as they wish. It's not a road reserve likely to be required to be a road at any point in the near future.
So it's a two-way route to?
Yes.
And it's owned by Dell?
Yeah, it's owned by Dell.
So we're not gaining funding?
No, but we're actually doing some capacity for someone to want to start another road reserve, which is a great thing.
Are there any other questions for the officer? Any recommendations on move? Councillor Deutsch, councillor Brinkley, who wants to speak? Councillor Deutsch?
Yeah, it's good to get rid of things we don't need, funny shipper.
Well, very succinctly put. If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. Building approval. Any questions in relation to building approval? These are done by... These are all our ones, are they? Or these?
The first group of ours.
And the second, not right, the other one. Any questions, councillors? If not, there's a recommendation there, someone moving it. Councillor Peppin? Councillor Deutsch, if you wish to speak. Councillor Peppin? Anyone wants to speak? If not?
I just like to see, I just want to say that it's great to see that building approval is going ahead and leaps and bounds. Hasn't happened in the last 10 years since I'm here, like it does now.
I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour. Planning matters. So there's a few planning that have been done and a few, notice, I make the comment just in general that they're not hanging around very long. So any questions for the CEO? Because he's also planning responsible as well.
Absolutely.
If not, someone?
Well, it is actually very pleasing to see fast improvement in the turnaround of these applications being approved. We had a terrible reputation for this a couple of years ago. And this is a huge improvement in service delivery.
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Anyone second? Councillor Hall, who wants to speak? Councillor?
Yes, I think with councillor Brinkley on one of those people who likes to read the date when the application went in and when it was approved. Because people, when they want to build or they want to do anything, they want to do it now. They don't want to be waiting six or 12 months down the track. So I just like to be right, like the planning and development officer for the quickness of the turnaround. Brilliant.
And it is impressive when it says 27th of the 5th, and then it's passed on 27th of the 5th.
You can stay here and wait, or go and have coffee.
Does anyone want to make a comment? If no one wants to make a comment, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. There's some, something more. Liquor lancers, have I done that? Thought of liquor, so we're, future waste and recycling services.
I could, Mr Mayor, just break this bit. We're doing some planning at the moment. Now, our current waste contract is up next year. And we're just doing some forward planning around our future nodes around waste in terms of household collection, but also in terms of our our resource recovery strategies and so forth as well. One of the elements says, probably interesting, I think we're including in the strategy development is looking at the idea of organic waste collection. We've been talking about, I guess, growing waste collection for quite some time, but that's moved on. And I think that there's a substantial amount of the waste that goes to landfill is actually in that organic waste category. It's things that we throw in the fridge, like I know there are very many carrots that may always go into the bin. So there's a lot of additional organic waste that's going to landfill at the moment. In addition to our voluntary levies, that sort of thing, there's a lot of household waste. And the idea of a separate organics collection may actually save us considerable money on landfill levies. Because they wouldn't go to landfill, they'd go to another digester kind of model, or a range of other ways of disposal. So there's a chance that providing extra service to the community may actually deliver cost savings to us, which would be a great outcome around. And people might be waiting on growing waste potentially for quite some time. This adds an extra dimension to that. And also looking at the extent of our household waste collection as well across municipalities. It's fairly broad, if you look at the map there, there is already a fairly broad extent of household waste collection. But just seeing if we can provide the extent that out to make people's needs in our very small communities, in our rural areas. The strategy also is looking at the nature of rural landowners as well in waste management, in waste delivery. So it's a model that we're working out at the moment.
Any questions for the officer?
Can I just, one question. It says, Catherine, the council currently provides curbside waste collection services for 4,700 households and businesses in curbside recycling collection for 3,551. There's a fair bit of difference between.
There is, yes. I think that's one that in equities we're going to try and smooth out a bit with the new strategy. Is because there is about 1,200 homes that receive curbside general garbage collection that don't receive a recycling collection. So it's quite a big difference there. That's one thing we want to smooth through in the process.
This issue was actually raised at Elmer's the other day. Some people that are not compulsory one, but have opted into the garbageers, have an option for the recycling. So they bring their bins up to the road, but that's all they do, they do the garbage. There's a lot of work to be done in that area. Any questions for the officer?
So, sorry, can you just? I guess what we're trying to do with the strategy is get on the front foot here too, rather than get around the time to write the tender for the new waste management collection service and then be wrong-footed on that and trying to play that very quickly. The aim is we have a very strategic approach. We look at what needs the community, we've already done some examination of that. We actually have a strategic approach to this new contract, rather than just a bit ad hoc. Something's happened to us in the past quite often is it snuck up on us, then we've had to make a rapid decision. It hasn't always worked out as well as it should have for the community or council for that matter. So we need to take a strategic view around those things. It's investment, I think investment out of this year's budget, about $50,000 to do the work. But I think it's money well spent in that space, because we already selected that three levies anyway, so.
I would like to mention something. Before this present contract, there was a different one, of course. And I don't know where it situated, either Horsham or Stow or somewhere around there. They actually done separating the recyclable cans and bins and things of that sort. I believe that he wanted to continue, but his services were a bit more expensive than the best one. I don't know if something can be done. At least they employed some local people.
But councillor Deutsch, our procurement policy does allow for waiting for locals. So I can't remember what it is now.
Not locals in Stow though?
Yeah, yeah. There is a load locally. But we're controlled by the... I don't want the inspector coming in here and saying, "We've given a contract to someone in Stow just because they're in Stow." And it's not in the best financial interest of the council. And that can be raised by people during the statutory process that the CEO is talking about.
Mr Mayor, I could just comment, the service that councillor Deutsch is talking about was previously run by an organisation and staff by people with special needs. And I don't think that service is available.
Okay, thank you. Have you finished?
Yes, yes.
Any question for the CEO? So we'll get briefings on this in a few. So anyone move a recommendation, through the report? Councillor Armstrong, councillor Hall? Anyone wants to speak? All those in favour? Pass, thank you. Section 86 committees of management minutes. I notice we've got a drop of minutes for a committee that doesn't invite councillor Brinkley to it. Two years supplies of minutes for Boangra.
I was a bit confused when we started agreeing with the Paul Redman.
Yeah, I was a bit confused in the beginning too, councillor. I thought that matter had been for anyone. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question please. The actual, and I wasn't wealthy, I couldn't attend the Alexander Hall community management. The general business place about whole farm from out of town traders, do they have a policy on that or is it? It talks about clarification from the economic development department, but it doesn't. And it talks about a free market policy. But I didn't know what that was, where anybody else did. And I'm talking about when a company came in selling a particular agricultural product and hired a local hall. And years ago, there was always a policy that we not allow those outside traders to come into our
Is there a competition?
Yeah, go to our traders. And so many shops empty up the street. I notice a fair bit of discontent. But I just wondered what that free market policy was.
I don't think we have one. I think it was a certain rhetorical flourish. I don't know if I can tell the people. I could almost picture them signing it. If I could just make some comment about this particular case. The particular trader who wished to use the Alex Hall for this purpose was actually market testing, or as a place that they might choose to relocate their business to. So it was actually potentially filling one of those vacant shops in the main street. So it struck me as foolish of us not to encourage them to at least do that market testing.
It doesn't say anything about that in any of the report, that's all.
No, that's not our report. That's the whole community report. And I'm not too sure how it finished up, so I'll have to follow up with the business and see how that went. But I think that it does provide an opportunity, because our rate could be seen as a risky proposal for a range of businesses to relocate to because of our population. And that was an opportunity for them to actually get a sense of the appetite that the committee might have had for that particular business. And the observations we made, we've got vacant streets to the main street, that would be a fantastic main street, great tail addition. And I could make just a personal comment about that. We do live in a progressive free market society. And we should be encouraging competition because that makes our commercial sector stronger. That's the general theory we say in play. It's not actually about protecting individual businesses, it should be about making a stronger commercial sector.
Can I just put the devil's idea thing? What does someone to one of the empty shops and actually try this as a market test rather than?
Because they had attempted to get access to one of the empty shops for a very brief for a couple of week period and were denied that opportunity by the owners.
And that's really good to hear, that that is the reason behind it. Because when I go back to the meeting, I now have a lot more knowledge about what happened. Thank you.
Any other question? If not, there's a recommendation there, move a recommendation? Councillor Hall, councillor Hall, who wants to speak? Anyone else wants to speak to it? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. Government administration coordinator. The reports are about sort of internal committees. The audit committee, we've had that meeting on the fourth of June. We had the CEO's remuneration before this meeting.
Might I ask a question, Mr Mayor? The audit committee, which you and I both attended, why is it not recorded?
No, that's a good question, Mr Mayor.
That we attended?
And if I could just remind, I think this comes down to the problem we face around the way that we're recording this. I think that it's not recorded until the minutes come in to be reported. And I think that's a very clear one. Those internal committees, it's very clear who's attended them. And from this point on, we'll just acknowledge that before the receipt of minutes, if that's the case. Because I was at that meeting too, and it was very clear that both you and the mayor attended councillor Brinkley. So we can actually change that arrangement.
Your memory is more than a bit, because I was an apology for that one.
Clear.
Yeah, that's where the new member sat.
Oh, that's right, yeah. It was only you there with councillor Brinkley, so. It was only you there, councillor Brinkway, so we'll get someone with a better memory to sort this out.
But it's a fair comment, and so that problem, we get it. So, there's a recommendation, did we have a move a second, I'm losing track. councillor Hall? councillor Deutsch, thank you for your finger, councillor Deutsch, who should speak? If not, I'll put a recommendation, all those in favour, in the past. Assembly of councillors. Any questions, any relations with the assembly of members' reports? Not with a recommendation there?
Another page for us?
There's a blank page deliberately, obviously, Mr councillor.
Just asking, I'm calling it about that blank page.
Right, no, I've seen it, yes.
So, there's nothing there. On the hard copies, of course, it's got a page left blank intentionally written on it, but the computer doesn't allow that. So, that's one for you and the hard copy, Mr councillor. There's a recommendation there that the assembly of councillors reports being received, through councillor Hall, second councillor Brinkway, who should speak, councillor? Anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll put a recommendation, all those in favour, in the past. Councillors' reports, councillor Deutsch?
Well, we had a few meetings with the CEO and some of the members of the sports committee all the, and I think they're all fairly happy with whatever the outcome is. I don't understand much to say.
Thank you, councillor Deutsch. councillor Pettman?
Yes, on the eighteenth, I do not met with the Royal Record Reserve. That was my first chance to work with the new committee. And I applaud them that it's a big task they've got overseeing our record reserve and trying to get everything sorted out, so I'm just looking forward to working with them again. So, all we have.
Nothing else. councillor Allgood?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. We actually, through Clubon involved, we, the tablet clubs are involved, actually, we took a tour of Willora, and it was really interesting to look at the Walker collection of photographs, they were glass ones, and they were actually developed, and the display is absolutely magnificent. And so very proud for Lowerson, her husband, and I can't think of his name then, were actually there, and they introduced everybody to his collection. We went to the bakery and we had a look at the old oven, and we went to the candle maker and we had a look at that as well, and it was a really good couple of hours out looking around the properties at Willora. One of the things that we were encouraged to go and have a real good look at was the new building. And the amount of pride that those people showing us around that new building showed was absolutely incredible, and, you know, it's really good to take, a lot of the people that we took don't drive anymore, they're in their eighties, and they could get out, they could walk around, and they could see the new, they could visit the toilet, and, you know, just gave you a good feeling about what we're actually doing, and we need to get out there more and have a look. And the other thing that I actually wanted to bring up tonight was that, one of the things I would like to ask about is grant information sessions. We have a lot of people come...
councillor Allgood, this is your report of what you've done.
Yes.
And the first one, councillor's got an invitation to it.
Yeah.
And that's our hall. But if you want an information sessions, and they have been indicated, they would be held, so. Have you attended anything else on behalf of council?
No, I just want to raise that up again. Now people know I've said it.
Oh, councillor Armstrong?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. On Monday, twenty-seventh of May, I attended an art exhibition opening at the Lake Balaic Information and Business Centre, and this was reconciliation week. And the artist whose work is being exhibited is named Ray Thomas, and his exhibition of prints and original artwork recognised the significance of the Lake Balaic region to the indigenous people of the area, and tell his stories. And that exhibition, I'm just gonna plug that, is open still at Lake Balaic Information and Business Centre until the end of May dot week in July, which is the fourteenth of July. On Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of May, I attended, and also councillor Allgood was in attendance, at a Grandpines Wimmera Mally meeting held at Tadjuun to share further information about East Grandpines pipeline, which we were all elated, has been fully funded now by state and federal government. It was attended by over one hundred and fifty people, and there were other meetings held in the municipality, that was the only one that I attended. I hear, though, that other meetings were equally well-attended, so I think that's a verification of the importance of this project to our municipality, not just for business growth, but also for the wellbeing of our communities to have a guaranteed supply of water to social and recreation facilities. There was also information shared there by Clem Sternfels from the Department of Agriculture, so there was some really interesting, there was sharing of resources across the community. People know who they can go to to learn more about the project, which will hopefully be connected in mid-two thousand twenty. And one of the interesting facts that I picked up from it was that the savings by the, that have come from the Wimmera Mally pipeline equal about a hundred and three gigalitres of water. Now, about eighty percent of that has gone back into the environment, and twenty percent is being reserved for our East Grandpines water pipeline. So, I was really impressed by that statistic, that there has been that kind of saving in piping water across that area of country north of us, and we're certainly going to reap the benefits from that, not at any cost that we can see to the environment at all. Eighty-twenty, it's a pretty good split. Couple of days later, on the twenty-ninth, oh sorry, that was on the twenty-ninth of May, at the end of that week was the Victorian Blue Ribbon Foundation Gala Ball, which was held to raise funds, as it happens every year, for the East Grandpines Health Service. And there were other councillors present there, yourself, Mr Mayor, and yourself, councillor Allgood. That was tremendous to see eighty thousand dollars being presented to the health service for the purchase of a new x-ray machine. So, again, tremendously well-supported event by our local community. Then Monday, the third of June, was a men's mental health event, referred to by its acronym HULT, which is Hope Assistance for Local Traders, which was also based by Grandpines Community Health, and councillor Deutsch was also present at that event. That has come about from the funds raised at the Healthy Blokes over forty's football match held in Arat last year. This year, there's going to be a combined football netball event, which I think will get great gate entry, I think the interest across the community of past local legends getting on the oval, and the netball, I understand, is going to be played on the oval as well, to be kind to older knees. It's a pretty clever way of going about it. It's just great to see that a fun event can highlight the attention required for pretty serious issues about mental health in our community. That's the conclusion.
councillor Brinkway?
Just like to mention one, which was the communal hall committee early in the week, early in the month, where I was able to inform them that councillors' decision to double their support funding and to retrospectively apply that was very well received.
Without applying for it.
Well, has that funding been afforded yet?
The only meeting that I went to that I would like to comment on, and the title is a mile long, so I'll just say Grandpil Central West Rural Resource Group, something along that. In other words, it's a forum of twelve councils which work together to find savings, have programmes, they're doing an excellent education programme amongst schools about waste management. They're working on a proposal for a joint procurement of services throughout those twelve councils. They're doing all sorts of wonderful things in the area of waste management, and although we might not hear much about them, they're actually doing really good work, and over time we'll receive the benefits of the work that they do.
Thank you. So, the last, lucky last is me. So, on the thirty of the fifth with the CEO, I went to the Central Grandpines Len Annual General Meeting, which was interesting, I'll leave it at that. I'm also volunteering with them, so it's a bit difficult. So, on the thirty-first of the fifth, I went to the M A V Emergency Management Committee meeting in Melbourne, then went to the Blue Ribbon Foundation dinner. Can I just say how generous the CEO was in his attendance there too?
I want to know where he put it.
It's sitting in his office.
I'm very proud of it too, just to be honest.
Probably saluted him in the morning.
On the fifth of June, I went to the Central Highlands CEO Mayor's meeting with the CEO, and we'll say no more about that. On the sixth, I had the Willora Hall Committee meeting, and yes, just like all the hall committees I've been to, very happy with the upgrade, done with their maintenance grant and the fact that it was backdated, so everyone's happy about that. The business breakfast, which was some of theirs, was very, very well-attended, and Charlie Defagley spoke very well, I thought, I mean, everyone spoke well, but he spoke particularly well. I've had a meeting with the Merrill Advisory Committee in Melbourne, and I had a hall committee meeting with Elmhurst on the same day, the thirteenth. Seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, I was in camp for the National Assembly, I'll fully brief councillors on that later. It wasn't as productive as it normally is, because Parliament was not sitting there, because normally Parliament would be sitting. But we did catch up with quite a few public servants, which often is more beneficial. And to hear the issues that other councillors have got throughout Australia was very enlightening and heartbreaking in some circumstances. And with the CEO and councillor Deutsch, on Saturday, we went to the Elmhurst Development Group meeting, and it was a good meeting, wasn't it? It was twenty, twenty odd people, they were all very positive about what's happening in their town and how they can move forward, so it was really good. And I'll just make a comment about something I did in a private capacity, which I don't normally do, I went to lay mits. And I've been to quite a few functions run by the municipal society, and this was a step well above what they've done before in their, in the settings, in the quality of the performance, all of them, and the ten-year-old boy was absolutely, if I could remember his name, outstanding. There wasn't a chair empty in the posh section, and the section that we haven't quite fixed the chairs up, there were quite a few of them occupied as well, so that's quite a large number of people. But the way the sets worked on that stage, and the work that the council staff have done, and the user groups to get it that way, absolutely outstanding, I really enjoyed it, and I don't normally enjoy seeing something I've seen professionally done, so I really did enjoy that. So, the recommendation of the councillors' reports being received, moved by councillor Hall, sent by councillor Armstrong, all those in favour? Yes, passed. Now, there's a notice of motion, which is... Can councillor Armstrong move that one, or do I have to get her to sit here to move that, and then the actual notice of motion, can she move?
I think you, I think you have to move this motion.
Yes, so, I'll remove myself from the chair. councillor, can you just start, you can do it there if you like?
Thank you.
Just for the, that I've moved that notice of motion?
Thank you. Do we have a second of the notice of motion, number one O eight, that councillor Beals has submitted, so moved?
councillor Hall?
Thank you. And as the mover, would you like to speak to the motion, please councillor Beals?
If people, I think it's got really good members, at the last council meeting, there was some confusion, I think possibly created by me, that's why I signed the notice to rescind, in relation to the moving of so many anomalies, one being the former C F A side, and one being, one McCauley Road, and those two are fine, but there was some discussion in relation to pound lane. And we moved, that it went from public use zone to general residential. The recommendation was that it was industrial, but in the confusion, we thought, no, that can't be right, or I thought it can't be right, and we passed, that it goes to general rural residential. It should have gone to industrial. And if this notice of motion gets up, there is a notice of, notice of motion to rescind gets up, there is another notice of motion.
Does, do any councillors have any questions regarding the notice of rescission for motion one O eight? No? Then we will vote on the rescission motion, those in favour? They also carried, thank you.
I'll move the notice of motion then.
Thank you councillor Beals. Do we have a second of the notice of motion? Thank you councillor Hall.
The same, this is the correct one.
Thanks councillor.
And I guess the only thing I can say maybe that if the planning officer at the time had been there, it's where local knowledge is sometimes a dangerous trap, in relation to reality.
Thanks for that explanation. Are there any questions regarding the notice of motion, Mr Beals? Thank you, in that case, I'll make the, the motion is moved, can we have a vote? Those in favour? Carried. Thank you councillor Beals.
I'm back.
You may sit in the chair.
Urgent business, is there any urgent business? Before we go into, as we go to a closed session, just want to indicate that a closed session is to do with staffing matters, contracts and business in confidence, and tenders. So, there's a recommendation there, we go into confidential councillor Armstrong, councillor Brinkway, is there anyone who wish to speak for or against the motion? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Thank you, meeting's closed.